Welcome all. Uh, we'd like to go ahead and call this regular meeting to order. Barb, would you call the role?
Sure. Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Kuhn?
Here.
Mrs. Steele?
Here.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Here.
Uh, we are going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by a Latha North High School student, Anjali Hawker Singh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Dr. McMullin?
All right. Well, good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's Latha Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, we feel as important that we review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. This meeting is designated for the board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Please understand that patrons attending the meeting do so solely in an observatory role. Out of respect for everyone in the audience, we request that audience members not speak, yell, or give applause during the meeting. This ensures the board, staff, and other attendees are able to listen and understand the business conducted. Anyone disrupting the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Again, thank you for attending tonight, and we'll now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. McMullin. Uh, we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda, item 2 dot 0 1.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, a second by Mrs. Felter.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. On to recognitions and awards.
Well, good evening, everybody. As we move into awards and recognitions, I'd just like to take a moment to extend a welcome to all of our distinguished guests. And to kick us off, I'd like to invite Atmas Energy Operations Manager Jerry Barrios and Manager of Public Affairs Erin Bishop up to the front, as well as Olathe Public Schools Community Liaison Heather Schoonover and Cindy Von Felt, Executive Director of the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. Atmas Energy has supported our district for 15 years through the Olathe Public Schools Foundation and various partnership opportunities. Atmas Energy believes in fueling bright minds and healthy futures for kids and fueling hope and growth for their neighbors by supporting the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. They are always ready to fund classroom grants, donate school supplies, and generously support the area of greatest need. They have annually supported to the back-to-school outreach with financial contributions and partnered with our 21st Century Academies, especially the Green Tech Academy. Green Tech facilitator Andrew Miller said that Atmas has been a key partner to help promote our mission as an Olathe Academy to reduce carbon emissions while sustainably providing services to the community. Atmas Energy, thank you for your partnership with Olathe Public Schools and the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. I'd now like to invite the Olathe West High School Girls Cross Country Team to the front, as well as Coach Kelsey Carbajo, their school administrators, and our district Athletic Director Matt Johnson. So this fall, at the 6A State Championship, Olathe West High School Girls Cross Country Team took first place. This is their third year in a row to be named state champions. Yes. Coach Kelsey Carbajo said that cross-country can often be looked at as an individual sport, but the girls see it as a team sport. It takes hard work and toughness to run cross-country, and these girls have proven to be some of the toughest in the state. Congratulations. And if there's any family who needs pictures or any family who are here who'd like to be recognized. Well, in that same vein, I am now going to ask Olathe North High School Junior Anjali Hawker Singh to come to the front with her Principal Jason Herman. So like the ladies at Olathe West, Anjali placed first individually at the 6A State Championship. This is her third year in a row to place first in the state competition, which means she has been named state champion every year of her high school career. Anjali, we are so proud of your accomplishments and look forward to seeing what you do next.
And Anjali, I will do better with your name next time.
All right, now I would like to welcome California Trail Middle School 8th Grader Mahi Coley, along with her science teacher Justin Payne and Principal Mike Wiley. Mahi placed second in the Nationwide Broadcom Masters STEM Competition. For her project, she identified potential biomarkers in cerebral spinal fluid that could improve the diagnosis accuracy of Alzheimer's. Determined to show other girls that it is possible to shine in STEM, Coley kick-started Stemming with the Stars, a local, cost-free mathematics competition event that had its first event last year. She was presented her award with a check for $2,500 in Washington DC at the John F. Kennedy Center for Performing Arts. It's truly incredible, Mahi. Congratulations. And I know Mom Schrudy is in the audience. If you want to come get a picture, just stand up. Oh, then yeah, we're good. And last, but certainly not least, Dr. Yeager has a very special recognition tonight.
So tonight, we would like to honor seven people who dedicate countless hours to our district, the Board of Education. January is Board of Education Appreciation Month. On behalf of myself, our staff, our students, our families, and our community, thank you for your commitment to the vision of our Olathe Public Schools, to prepare students for their future. Your support is essential to the excellence that we continue to see within our school district. Thank you, Joe Beveridge, Brad Boyd, Brian Connell, Lieta Felter, Robert Kuhn, Julie Steele, Steele, and Shannon Wickliffe for all that you do. So I'm going to call your name one by one. As you walk down, we're going to give you a little love because we don't do that at many of our meetings. Becky has a small gift for you, a piece of student artwork, and then we're going to take a family photo up front. So, uh, we'll start with our Board President, Shannon Wickliffe. Vice President Brad Boyd.
You're matching pretty good there, though, you know?
It's a warbler rope analysis tonight, so that's good. Board Member Julie Steele. Board Member Lieta Felter. Board Member Joe Beveridge. Board Member Robert Kuhn. And Board Member Brian Connell. We truly appreciate your contributions to our students, our staff, and our community. Thank you all so much for all that you do each and every day.
That concludes our recognitions.
All right, we will move on, and thank you for that. I think I can speak for the entire board that we appreciate it. And this is a lovely piece of art. I will definitely have that in my office. We'll move on to School Spotlight. Mr. Herman?
Yes, good evening, and, um, thank you, guys. Again, it's, um, I, I knew that Dr. Yeager was going to knock that out of the park, but that was the very first thing I had written on here, was congratulations and appreciating you guys. Um, I know how much time and effort, and our community greatly appreciates what you guys do every day. My name is Jason Herman. I am the very proud Principal of Olathe North High School, and, um, I want to thank Dr. Yeager, thank the board, and SLT for the opportunity to come tonight and present, what, what we do at Olathe North and the things that we drive inside our building and what we're passionate about. And so I've got a few things here that we're going to clip through and take a look at. If you've ever been in to any of my meetings, I always start off with a screen that looks very similar to this. Um, on the left is my family. Uh, my beautiful wife Denise, who is a 1992 grad from Olathe North High School. Cameron, uh, in the middle there is in the graduation gown, she graduated in 2021 from Olathe North. My daughter Sophie is a current sophomore, will graduate in 2025. And, and I've been at Olathe North for 25 years. I don't know how to describe anything else except Olathe North as my family. And on the right, you see, um, over the 150 certified staff. Uh, that is right after we did our bike build this year for, we built 50 bikes for 10 title schools and gave five bikes to each school to give out at their open house or sneak-a-peek or whatever they wanted to do. Um, that was on the brand-new turf field, uh, the first day back this school year. So I always relate these things because we use the word "family" at Olathe North quite a bit. And, um, again, my family, the Olathe North family, community, um, students and staff is, is what I care about. And, and I'm, I'm so proud to mention that in every breath. So let's start off with what the first day at Olathe North looked like with our students. So if you saw that screen, I named it, uh, "Back to the Scarlet and Blue", and, and every year we do a theme at Olathe North, and we focus heavily on, you know, what we really think this year is about and how it's going to drive us. And you look at several different ones on here, "I Am One", "You Are One", "We Are One", we're working really hard with our diversity at that time and recognizing our individuality, but "As We Are Is One", right? "ONE" represents Olathe North Eagles. It's a great, it's a great acronym for us to have. Um, "We Are Eagles Strong" was our COVID year. Uh, "This Is Our House" was our 60-years-at-Olathe-North-a-diamond anniversary in that building located at 600 East Prairie. And then this year, "Back to the Scarlet and Blue", but that isn't what I want you to focus on on this screen. On the screen, I want you to look at the circle that goes around the "I Am One", the S-T-R-N-G in "Strong", the four in "All For One", the diamond in the house. And what you're noticing within those is there's four Rs listed, right? Those four Rs talk about the relationships, the rigor, um, the relevance and the resilience that we at Olathe North focused on every single year. And, and the one that's in the middle, for those of you that have been around, when I did my interview to be the Principal of Olathe North, that was the original theme that I brought into my interview room. And when I got hired, I said, "Wow, this is really going to work. Let's try this theme out." So we, we've kind of ridden that train. The best part about these themes is I've gotten them from multiple principals, from, um, parents have sent me ideas like, "Jason, I saw this when we were so-and-so. This might be a great theme for you." So I've got them stacked up for as long as I'm there to, uh, to get those themes run out every year. But, um, I want to talk about each one of these individually, and relationships is number one. I put it number one. We, it's the very first thing we say in our mission statement because if you don't have this, the other three are, are, they just won't work. Um, and we're, and we're really proud of the positive relationships that we're going to establish as a staff with our students, the positive relationships we establish with our parents and our community. And then lastly, the positive relationships within our colleagues in our own building. And, and Dr. Yeager this year challenged all of our buildings, all of us principals to work on three main areas, and one of those was community relations. And here, you see a picture, um, I'm here with community partners at the beginning of the school year, and then on the right, you see one with our, um, with our Father's Club. And, and we've recently just started that. Um, Brian's a big part of that, um, and what we do with our Father's Club. And this was the day after the week of, um, uh, Thanksgiving. And it was, we had 2,000 breakfast items for our kids, all of these dads. And Olathe North's unique, as in, we don't have one or two entrances to Olathe North. We have like seven or eight. So it takes a lot of dads to make sure that we hit all the kids coming in, and they did a great job. And we're going to do a lot more with them, and, and we're really excited about that. The second R is rigor. And again, when I talk about those expectations that Dr. Yeager is, is academic achievement, and it's really important for us. So you see high expectations for student achievement. And again, we have tons of honors and AP. Um, I'm very fortunate. My daughter, who's currently at Nebraska, it's only going to take her three-year to grad because of the academic achievement she had at North and all of the college credits she came out. We're very data-driven, um, really important. But we also realize that we have at-risk kiddos, and we've got to have those interventions in place to make sure that they're successful. One of the celebrations at the bottom, two perfect ACTs in this current graduating class, along with seven National Merit finalists. We're very proud of that. And again, with the Distinguished Scholars Program, um, with MedPro, some of our 21st Century programs, we have, we have the, the, you know, we're very lucky. The Coley's left, but that's a, that's a future DS kiddo. I know she's going to come to North and absolutely kill it. And her older sister just stepped out of the room, but she's currently at Harvard. Um, and we're very lucky to have students like that in our school district. So here's a picture. On the left, you see a Battle of Brains group. This was our Medical Professions Group from 2021, our seven National Merit in the middle. The one on the right is, is fairly new. We've only, they've only been with us their second year, but it's, um, our Hispanic Development Fund. They've been with us and supporting, um, we're the only high school in Olathe that they're supporting at this point. And it's very kind of chosen throughout, um, the state of Kansas and Missouri. And we're very lucky to work with them. We have a liaison that comes into our buildings twice a week and works with kids. And last year, we were able to give away 16 scholarships. Dr. Yeager was there to see that. And we're really excited specifically about that. They support us in our ACT prep and all of those pieces. So really striving for that high academic beast. Next is relevance. We have to explain, and our kids have to understand every single day why we're asking them to do what they're going to do. It's super important, and, and, and we need to make sure that they understand that there's a purpose. 21st Century Program, I've mentioned it, I will mention it again. We have five. We're very proud of them, and it does really drive kids and the excitement of what they're doing. We also understand that sometimes it's going to teach them what I don't want to do when I go to college, right? And that's, that's another great part of that. Career and tech ed opportunities that we know are college and career-ready. Um, the market value asset piece that you hear about quite a bit, um, when people are talking to you about what our goals are with our career readiness. But the last one for me and my goal is the individual plan of study. Four-year plans, I think, should be written and done within that freshman year so our kids have a path. I'm not saying that they can't change paths through the process, but we have the technology and the ability to do it. I think it's something that we need to put a lot more work into. And personally, at Olathe North, we're going to try to do that for all of our students. So here, the other part within the relevant piece is we love to celebrate our diversity at Olathe North. And just recently, we had our large diversity, um, assembly. And this is just a great, small, quick representation of what you would see at that. This is one of the most popular events that we do every year, and our kids absolutely love it. And the best part is it's social justice. It's not just about race. It's about all of our kids and the opportunity for them to be on the floor and share something that they're passionate about and for all of our students to learn about them. Finally, the last one's resilience, and again, is we're dealing with mental health needs and those certain pieces that all of our kids need that support, our staff support, what we do within our academic intervention time that we place in all the high schools. More than it just always being about closing the achievement gap, it's also an opportunity for our kids to depress, um, or to decompress and get through their day. And we're really excited about all the things that we do. But resilience is certainly something that's, that's important. So it leads to the final third piece that Dr. Yeager asked, and that's the climate and culture of our building, right? And so this video here is just kind of some screenshots of over the last couple of years of just things that are happening at our school, so you guys can see a little bit more into Olathe North.
What makes Olathe North unique is not only that we are the original high school, we're the oldest one. We have so many longstanding traditions, the diversity of our student body. A lot of people like to toss the word "family" around, but we really mean it here.
So our mission statement listed here, while celebrating diversity, our mission is to develop adaptive, responsible citizens through relationship, rigor, relevance, and resilience. That's what I have for you guys tonight. I hope you got a little bit of a peek at what's happening inside our building, and you guys know you're welcome anytime, so, thank you.
I, I appreciate that very much. Um, thank you for the presentation. I would open it up to any questions that anybody has. I, I would make a quick comment. I'm a little surprised that under culture and climate, there was no reference to "Stay to the Right", which seems to be a big thing, but, uh, no, I appreciate that. Mr. Herman?
Yeah, staying to the right for sure. Um, when there's 2,080 kids walking through hallways, we have to stay to the right, or we're not going to get anywhere in that building. John Hutchinson and Travis, you guys loud and clear?
Any, any questions for Mr. Herman?
I just wanted to have you say it again. How many bikes did you build at the beginning of the year for the title schools?
So we built, um, 50, right? At 10 title schools, we were able to give five, or title elementary schools, we were able to give five to each school so that they could hand them out. And, you know, every year, we've always done something that was kind of related. And, um, when we did the bike build, the best part was, it was, I was going on vacation, and I had to really quick-hit a text message. But I happened to have two general managers at the Walmart here, um, on the west side of Olathe and the one down on Johnson Drive, and both moms were like all over this. And then I had help from Cindy, and we were able to get all the funds together. It didn't cost us a cent by all the donations, and it was great to get those bikes. And we, we actually, they were box kits, so I, we made them, we were in there building bikes this hard.
So thank you for that. That's amazing.
So, Mr. Herman, I don't want to brag or anything, but I think I'm the only one at the dais that is a true hard Eagle. Dr. McMullin and I graduated in the same class just a couple of years ago from Olathe North. People ask me, "Was it the only high school?" No, there were two. There were two high schools at the time. Uh, but thank you. I've never been so proud of my alma mater. It's just great to see how it's grown and the new things that are going on in that building that weren't happening when I was there, and it's, um, anyway, I'm so proud. Thank you for sharing tonight.
Well, Julie, thank you, and at least I had one distinguished scholar, our, our graduate mentioned in that sentence. Ouch. Just kidding. Dr. Jimmy McMullin. It's Ashed in History, Olathe North lives.
And actually, Heather Schoonover was doing some motions in the back of the room, too.
I thought I'd share something with you that I, I found very, very telling. So I'm at the Olathe West, Olathe North basketball games the other night, and I'm standing on the rail because there's no seats anywhere. There's some students sitting next to me, and they're screaming at the boys' team. And I was like, "That's right. Say it again. Tell them what to do." And they looked at me like, "Whoop." And I said, "Who were, which school do you go to?" And they said, "Olathe North." I said, "What grade are you?" And they said, "Ninth", and they said, "Ninth grade." And I said, "So what do you think about North?" And this is what she said. And the three girls looked at me and was like, "A lot of people say a lot of stuff about our school, but we're family. That's how we go to school." And I was like, "Did you tell Mr. Herman that?" Just tell him, it was like, you know, a ninth grader, a young African-American girl, already owning that. And I just wanted to give you that feedback. I hadn't had a chance to follow up, but it was, I was like, "You girls are awesome." It was like, "Good thing you're here." And it's like, ninth grade, coming across to another school, to sit at the high school to yell for their team, but the fact that they owned that it was their family was pretty powerful, so I thought I'd share it.
Thank you. Yeah, that's awesome.
Great. Others? All right, thank you again, Mr. Herman. All right, we'll move to 4 dot 0 2, Plan of Finance Review with Mr. Hutchinson and Mr. Avi, I believe.
Good evening. It's my, uh, pleasure to be joined this evening with, uh, Mr. Dustin Navy. He's the, uh, Managing Director of Piper Sandler. While, uh, our presentation may not be as exciting as, uh, Mr. Herman's, it's just as important because as he motioned to myself and Mr. Palangi, this topic of capital improvement plan finances, how he gets all these things he keeps asking for over the years. plan finances, how he gets all these things he keeps asking for over the years. The plan of finance is really all about bond funds and how we finance all of our long-term projects in the district. You know, I've said many times, and I'll have to say it again, this is about bricks and mortar and equipment. We would love to be able to use these funds when you see some of the numbers to help with teacher salaries, electric bills, custodians, but it can't be used for that. These are only for our capital needs. And it's a really important piece to think about because in the state of Kansas, as all of you know, capital outlay, our fund, the levy is capped at eight mils, and we just simply don't generate enough for all of our capital needs. So we focus our bond sales to take care of those longer-term items. However, this strategy of issuing bonds isn't really taken lightly, though. It may seem like because we have a lot of debt and we do a lot of issues that we do take it lightly, but we always have an eye on what we call levy sensitivity that we're going to talk about shortly, and also timing to the market. Those are two key variables that Mr. Avi's gotten down to a science for us. So the, the three keys to our plan are always the long-term capital needs, matching what those projects are to long-term financing, as I mentioned, levy sensitivity, and timing of markets. In that long-term capital needs, that's that first variable or component of our plan, and it's, it's all about securing that long-term debt. And as I mentioned, we've had a long history of reliance on bond issues in this district. Currently, our outstanding debt is $727 million, and that's a, you know, that's a very large number when you, when you hear it. But the district does continue to rapidly pay that down. In the next 10 years, six, over 60% of that number will go away. So that, we're at a very big peak in our history right now because some of the needs that we had as we were growing at a much, much higher rate than before. Another strategy we use to try and keep that number down is the state of Kansas allows us to do bonds for 30 years out. At least as long as I've been here, and I know well before, we never exceed that 20-year mark. We don't want to have excessive finance costs and trap future boards to where they, there's no flexibility when, when those needs come along. That levy sensitivity is really the key objective in our plan. We always want to make sure that we're keeping the promise that we make when we're out doing bond, bond referendums. You would recognize this from Bond 2022. We've, we always watch this curve, what's exactly, can we keep the promise? Can we keep the, the debt within the limits of that? And Mr. Avi will talk in a little more detail in just a second. Now, the strategies utilized in the issuance of our bonds from our 2022 authority really illustrate just how well this plan has been working that, that Mr. Avi's brought to us. So at this point, I'm going to shut up, turn it over to him, and let him kind of explain in a little more detail exactly how we monitor this.
Thanks, John. Good evening, everyone. Great to see everyone again and glad to be here to talk about some positive financial things. So as John alluded to, as we talked about for many years, really, our plan of finance is really objective-driven, right? So really going back to 2013, I'm not sure we could have predicted the, the number of bond issues that would, would happen, number one, or, or the amounts of bond issues or the type of, of projects that the district would be considering. Since that time, we've really focused on, everything that we do is primarily related to the levy sensitivity and meeting more, more importantly, the mill levy commitment, right? So I think any sort of financial plan that we put together is really developed around making sure as we're communicating to voters what that mill levy commitment's going to be, that we can deliver it when it comes time to passing bond issues and doing the financings. As you might expect, and as we've talked about in finance committee for many, many years, there's a lot of variables that go into a plan of finance, right? So valuations changes, right? So, so we don't control good things that happen in valuations, nor do we control bad things that happen in valuations. State aid on bonds has changed significantly in the last 10 years, right? So there's actually a portion of our, our bonds that do get state financial aid, meaning the state of Kansas pays a certain percentage of principal and interest payments. That has changed significantly by legislative law in recent years. Our bond payment, as John said, we, we, we really tried to maintain a 20-year bond repayment schedule. There are a lot of districts who extend beyond that time period. So we try to maintain consistency with our bond repayment and bond amortization. Then also investment of idle funds, right? I mean, we're now in an environment where we can invest those funds, but really from 2011 through 2022, we've had very little investment earnings. The ability to obviously invest idle bond funds is very helpful to the plan of finance as well. So certainly a lot of things that are relevant to the plan of finance. And I think the key is the financial plan is not stagnant, right? It's something that we're updating every single year as all of these things change to make sure that we are able to meet that mill levy commitment on a consistent basis to voters. As you might expect, interest rate chart, right? There's been a lot of things that have changed in this past year. I've been doing this for 20-plus years and probably the most challenging market environment I've experienced. As you all know, interest rates are, interest cost is the biggest expense related to any financing, right? It's our largest expense, and it, the impact of interest rates on our plan of finance means whether we're going to meet our commitment or whether we're not going to meet our commitment. So we're, really what I want to do is kind of give you a sense of really what's happened in this past year. And again, as we were talking about bond elections a year ago, we were at all-time record lows from a rate perspective, right? So a lot of things have changed since that time. Interest rates are also a double-edged sword. It depends on what side of the equation we're on. Are we on the borrowing side? Or are we on the investment side, right? And so what I wanted to, to share, what I wanted to just share, which I think is just relevant, and again, maybe more a snapshot of, snapshot, right? So crystal balls, if we were talking about this in March of last year, our crystal ball would be a lot different than what it is now, no different if we're sitting here now talking about what may be in next week, let alone in next year, right? But, you know, which side of the equation are we on? So obviously, when we're on the borrowing side, we want to borrow at the lowest cost possible, right? But borrowing at the lowest cost possible helps us obviously meet our mill levy objectives. The timing of when we actually sell bonds, again, if we had the crystal ball to know exactly when that should be, that would make things a lot easier. The reality is, is that we're making those decisions based upon what we know at that time and making sure we can meet the mill levy commitment to voters. That is the primary objective without controlling anything else that we can't control, right? So, so on the borrowing side, I think, which is, this is very, very relevant, right? So this is just an illustration of our total interest cost. So remember our conversations going into our election in March of last year, we had talked about more of a phased bond issuance approach based upon rates being an all-time record lows. As soon as that election passed, really March and April, we saw, started to see a significant shift in inflationary factors, which obviously we see, seeing inflation. Inflation typically means higher interest rates, which is obviously held true based upon hindsight this past year. So we made a decision at times, at that time saying, hey, interest rate risk negatively impacts our ability to deliver our commitment. And so we made the decision to, to move forward the strategy to issue all of our bonds at one time. So based upon that strategy, again, snapshot of where we are today, our total interest cost on the, on the bond issuance last spring, about $177 million, okay? If we were looking at that same bond issuance today, okay, our total interest cost would be slightly less than $205 million. Okay, so again, it's, it's just understanding what we know and making assessments of making sure we can meet our objectives. Obviously, it's at a cost avoidance, again, a snapshot of today, a cost avoidance of about 20, 26 and a half million dollars of cost avoidance on the borrowing side of the equation, okay? So the next slide, so borrowing at low rates, or lower rates is better than higher rates, right? Now, investment side, right? So now that we've locked everything in, right, higher interest rates are actually really, really good for us, right? So we're not spending all, all the bond dollars at one time. We're spending them over time as we need them for projects. So while we're, while they're sitting idle, they're also obviously being invested. I think this is really interesting. So obviously, you know, again, we have not seen investment returns like this since pre-2007, right? So again, a drastic shift in just overall strategy and opportunity related to the investment of bond funds, but also just district idle funds in general. Again, this is just a snapshot of saying if, if year ago, we were probably at a half a percent investment rate at the most, right? If we were investing those funds, we'd be earning $3.3 million during the course of construction, okay? I'm using 3% as just an average over time. We're probably, right now, we'd be at a higher rate of return than 3%, but just over time, if we're generally averaging a 3% rate of return on our idle funds, we would expect about $20 million of investment earnings on our project dollars over the course of the construction projects, right? So again, a value to the district long-term of, of difference, about $17 million, right? So again, kind of a big deal that, and again, John did a great job with this, but again, anything related to the bond side, right, is really kind of its own separate thing from a school district finance perspective. We, we can't transfer dollars in from, from operating to pay for bonds, nor can we take anything related to bonds and transfer it into the operating side of the equation, right? So I think that was a really good differentiation to make sure that we're, on the bond side, it's really kind of its own separate plan of finance. Like, it's really related to just capital projects and making sure we can deliver on the commitment to voters. The last thing, I'll turn it back to John. So refinancings, again, we've, we've reviewed these and we've talked about these over, over the years, and, and we, yeah, refinancings are strategies, right? And I think we've been very deliberate on our requirements, what the minimum should be, when we should refinance. So to date, we've saved, last 10 years, we've saved $35 million of interest expense from refinancing. But more importantly, as we refinance, what you, what you probably also remember is we also refinance with an intent, obviously, interest cost savings, number one, but also paying off our bonds early. Okay, that's always been part of the conversation objective when we think about refinancing. And John made a great point, right? We do have, we've done a lot of projects in 10 years. We do have a lot of debt outstanding. We're, we're paying off 67% in 10 years. Yeah, I'm probably most proud of that, to be quite honest, with respect to the rapid, the rapidness of these projects over the years. 67% is paid off in 10 years. That's pretty remarkable, and I'm not sure any of the district could say the same thing. So again, I think the refinancing strategy, it's, it's, again, market timing, making sure we're capturing the opportunity, but also thinking about how, how those refinancings fit into a larger plan of finance, which is, again, is mill levy commitment, hopefully paying off burnt bonds early at the same exact time. With that, I think, John?
I just want to try and summarize, you know, it's a lot of high-finance stuff and Dustin threw a lot of numbers at you, but the one known we have is in the last 10 years, there's been $35 million saved in refinancing. So that, that's a phenomenal number. There isn't a lot of opportunity right now for that. We've pretty much exhausted it. And as Dustin said, on the Bond 2022 strategy, obviously, it's a crystal ball. We have to kind of take two points in time. But what he said is just on the interest cost avoidance, we're at 26 and a half million, 17.1 on interest earnings. So really, there's $78 million of cost avoidance or savings that's occurred through this plan of finance that was put in place a decade ago, of constantly monitoring the markets, having benchmarks for when to refund, monitor the debt curve, maintain the levy to where we promised. The levy's gone down in the last 10 years from about 21 mils to about 14.3 mils. Yes, that is driven a lot by assessed valuation, but it's, it's great that we can keep that promise and keep it clicking down. So it's been a very successful plan, and a lot of gratitude to Piper Sandler for joining our team and helping us walk through that. Any questions?
I would just ask maybe that you add briefly, if you may. So when we look at the $78 million, what does that mean for our bond dollars in terms of what we're able to accomplish and do and that sort of thing?
When I used, when I always stand there and talk about this debt curve and I'm doing bond presentations, I say, see, it's going to come down in about five years. No, it won't because you'll have a new set of projects. That makes that curve come down a lot faster because, because the bond and interest fund can pay off more of the debt, or it, it lets us, or it allows us to, you know what? We can actually take that mill levy from 14.3 to 13.9 because values have grown enough. We don't have to have that much in the bank to make sure we can pay everything off in that 10, 10 years for over half a bit, 20 for the rest. So it, it has a lot of benefits, but as Dustin said, it doesn't have the benefit of, oh, we'll just transfer it to the general fund and do something else with it. It's all encapsulated within one plan. But it just shows, when we talked about, we're going to be up there at 14.3 for at least five, six years, can't go back out, as these things occurred, a lot gives you flexibility that if we had to do an elementary school on the west side of town quicker than we thought, the plan of finance would blow.
That's great. I just want to thank you, John, and Dustin, and your teams for being proactive, right, with a great plan that in my time on the board has saved this district, you know, tens of millions of dollars, which is phenomenal and to your point, gives us that flexibility to, to do some other things if we have to. With that, I would open it up to, to questions.
I'd like to echo the sentiment. I was sitting there thinking, I wonder if Dustin knows the dollar amount we've saved through refinancing and then boom, there it was, kind of like a genie in a bottle.
It reminds me a lot.
Thank you for this. I mean, it's, it's made a material difference in being able to be nimble and meet the need here. And then you didn't mention that you also adjusted the length of the bond terms on things like technology and, I mean, responsive to feedback we got in the community and just, you know, smart business decisions. So thank you for your leadership on this, and the numbers really help. Thanks.
Not making promises, but I, I do want to mention, since you brought up technology, our short-term goal, hopefully in the next three years, is if values continue to grow, we want to get the technology out of bond financing. We should be able to generate enough room in capital outlay. You'll see future action item for device purchases. Mr. Humphrey has done a great job of developing a, a plan for replacement cycle. These bond dollars will get us into that plan, and then we're, we're pretty confident we can start to shift those technology costs back into capital, not have to do complicated short-term bonds. Or designate the first two payments of this bond were really for the technologies. It's just, it's much cooler.
Others? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, 4.03, Crisis Alert Update. Mr. McMullin, Dr. McMullin, I apologize, Jim, and Mr. Kyger.
Well, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to circle back with the board and, and update you on our crisis alert implementation. As a quick reminder, it was just last June that Brent Kyger and myself were up here talking to you about this new product that we felt would really enhance our safety protocols. And in July, the board approved us moving that direction. And we had a very rapid install in July and August and started the school year up and running with Crisis Alert. So tonight, we're going to do a refresher on the actual Crisis Alert product and what it does for us, and then we'll talk a little bit about our first semester data and usage as well. So I'm going to let Brent take it from here.
All right. Good evening, board and Dr. Jaeger. Thanks for giving us this opportunity. Like, like Dr. McMullin said, we got the opportunity over the summer to, to bring this product to you. After, after a search of, of all, of all the vendors and products out there, we felt like this was the one that really would, would set our district apart and really make us one of the safest districts in the area. I'll do a quick, quick reminder of what the, what the product is. So Synthegix is the company, Crisis Alert is the product. You'll see, you'll see staff members wearing it behind their badge, just like this. All of our staff member are issued their own badge. The, the idea being it's a wearable product, so it's not, it's not a cell phone app. There's not a, what you might call a panic button on the wall. It's a badge that's on, that, that's kept on, on, on our person. What, what it does is it allows, gives every staff member the ability to quickly summon help in the event that, that we need it. So we have beacons installed all over our district, inside and outside. You'll see a couple in, in this room, and it's Bluetooth technology. So what it does is it allows anyone to press that button three times, and it sends a signal to that beacon, which, which then sends that signal to the, the site responders at that building, so that building's safety team. So for example, at, at a high school, it's going to be all the admin team, so the five principals, school resource officer, the safety specialist, the nurse. So, so the right folks are going to get, get the message immediately. What it can also do, in addition of just needing help in an urgent situation, has the ability to put any building on, on a lockdown. So in the event there's a, a critical situation such as an active shooter, by continually pressing that button on the eighth press, all the beacons that you see throughout the building flash red, message takes over any computer screen that's connected to the, to the district Wi-Fi that states we're in a lockdown, and there's also an audible message that gets played over the intercom. What that
What that does is it quickly announces to the entire building that there's a critical incident, and we need to get behind a locked door right away. So some of the issues that might come up for what we call the staff alert, or the three-button press, would be a behavior matter, could be a fight or disturbance, or a medical issue, whether it's at an athletic field or in the classroom. Talked about the lockdown a little bit. So again, our implementation, Dr. McMullin mentioned it a little bit, we brought it to you guys end of June. I'll steal a phrase from Dr. McMullin, that we rolled this out in warp speed, which is exactly what it felt like. But it was good. We got up and running by the first day of school, and every USD 233 employee has their badge, as does every substitute teacher, they have their own badge. We currently have over 5,500 beacons placed all throughout our district. So that's, again, that works inside, it also works outside. You might see them on parking lots, on recess playgrounds. If it's on our property, then this product, this product, which is one of the features I really like. Some of the things that we've used it for, you know, they vary a little bit, and we'll talk later in the presentation about elementary versus secondary. But some of the more common reasons that our staff have used it for are there on your screen. So elopements largely at the elementary level there. So when one of our students is having an issue and leaves the classroom, or unfortunately sometimes briefly leaves the building, that's a great time to use this product. Because again, what it does is it notifies the building administration and the safety team that there's an issue and specifically where they're at, so it helps get resources there quickly. Of course, medical emergencies, anything that could happen on the playground, student behavior, student disturbances, all those sorts of things are just a few examples of some of the reasons our staff have been using the product. With that, I'm going to turn back over to Dr. McMullin to talk about some of the specific data.
Okay, so we're pleased to not share with you our first semester data, and as you can see, we had almost 3,400 uses of our staff alert. At the elementary level, 3,261, 75 at the middle school, and 60 at the high school. I will say, you know, that elementary number is certainly higher than we anticipated, frankly. A couple of things to kind of frame that. One, in talking and working with Synthegix, you know, nationally, that matches their trends across districts across the country, that it's used more at the elementary level than the secondary level. Of course, we have 36 elementary schools, and so really, when you break it down by 36 elementary schools over an 18-week semester, it really comes out to about five per week per school. So now granted, we have some schools that used it much more than others, et cetera. And then we had some other instances where maybe there might be a, one specific incident where the button was pushed four or five times. It could be as an elopement was taking place, and the staff member kept hitting it to update their location or what have you. So we had great usage first semester. The breakdown, you'll see about 79% were labeled as behavior, 17% elopement, 3% on the medical side, fighting was just under 1%, and suspicious activity under 1%. Couple of things to highlight on that slide, one on the medical, that 3% comes out to about 78 instances. And what really is refreshing to us is that, a year ago this time, the response time to those 78 instances would not have been as rapid as it was this year because of this program of Crisis Alert that we implemented. So pretty excited about that. Benefits, as we've talked about, you know, the empowerment of staff to summon help with the touch of a button. And that's not only the three-button push that I need assistance due to a medical issue or a student issue or a stranger, but it also empowers every staff member to put the building on a lockdown. And so whether you are a principal, a teacher, a custodian, a secretary, a food service worker, if you see something super dangerous that would dictate us going into a lockdown, you have the authority to do that. And that's that much quicker we get locked down and get everyone safe. Obviously, we get our campus responders quickly to the exact location. The location services on this product have been just tremendous. Every time we get an alert, shows us, the map pulls up on our cell phones, shows us exactly the building, the staff member, and exactly where they are in that building. And then I think, you know, we'd be remiss if we didn't take an opportunity to talk about just many of our other layers of safety measures that we have in our district. Raptor is our visitor management system, so any visitor to any of our buildings checks in at the front office, and their ID is scanned against the National Sex Offender Registry. That piece is nice, but the other piece that we often forget about is, it also prints a badge for that person with their picture on it and their location they're going to. So 27,000 of those were printed this first semester. We added safety specialists to all of our high schools, and as a reminder, those are all retired law enforcement with over 25-plus years of experience for the five or former SROs. Improved camera and door locks as a result of the bond. Digital radio upgrade is now complete district-wide. For those of you that don't know, we switched from analog to digital. That's like going from your TV in the 80s to hi-def TV right now. It is that drastic of a change. That was tremendous. We just are just about finished installing all the night lock devices in all of our secondary schools. They were already in our elementary schools. Again, that's the pin that drops at the base of a door that allows a teacher to quickly lock their door and get their class to safety should they need to. And of course, as we came across this product, you know, last January, you know, Brent and I, especially Brad said Brent and I'm taking the credit, it was Brent. Brent certainly is always looking at what else is out there that we don't have that we think would help our system. And there's a lot of products out there, and there's a lot of things we look at and like, I don't know that that's the best fit for us, but we really felt this was. And so, that being said, we'll stand for any questions. I'll take the easy ones and give the other ones to Brent. It's all right.
Thank you for that. Questions from the board?
I've got a question, a couple if I could. You expressed in your surprise around the number of elementary. In reverse, are you surprised or is Synthegix surprised at what looked like a relatively low number, given the sheer volume of middle school and high school students, right? 60 and 75, I don't have it in front of me, but it's about like that for each of those levels, given that each one of those represents about a third of the students in the district? So is that low? Is that surprising? Is that statistically relative to other markets like ours?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, in talking with Synthegix, it's pretty standard across the country. And again, it was a surprise to us, frankly. We thought it would be higher at that level. I think there's a few things that factor into that. One, I think as kids get into middle school and high school, they know the routines of school, they know the code of student conduct, they know the expectations, and so I think there's that piece. I think there's also, you know, at the elementary level, with just one administrator, one counselor, you know, there's just not the support staff in place, you know, like you have at a 6A high school with the volume of staff. You know, you've got to think, at a high school, you have staff that are maybe on a supervisory, you know, each hour throughout the building, helping monitor things, et cetera. And so, and the other piece is that elementary kids are learning school, and the staff is learning about the kids and their needs. And so sometimes it takes that model of discovery to figure out what supports we need to have in place for our kids. So, you know, I'll be really curious to see our second semester data, because, you know, again, as we talked about, implementation at warp speed for all the right reasons, and I would do it again in a heartbeat. But I think, you know, some of our buildings certainly, at the elementary level, have had some pretty high use, but the data piece was critical for them, because it allowed them to reconvene as a staff, talk about some norms, set, you know, some expectations on that. And so I'll be really curious to see our data at the end of next semester as well.
You know something, I'd like to follow up, because when we had spoken before, you said there were some coaching that comes with some of this as well, right? You had expressed some concerns that, how come some of these folks aren't ringing their button at all?
Right, yeah.
And you had shared that some of those folks were a little concerned that it might reflect on their ability to contain the class, but maybe they were trying too hard to control instead of asking for help. Can you talk a little bit about the ongoing coaching during the fall and now go into the spring of, you know, it's okay to hit that button, or, you know, these, remember, these are the situations? Can you talk a little bit about the coaching that you all have learned to give these teachers to free them up to use it more? And then, but also maybe someone who was, and all the time?
Yeah.
Because you shared some of that with some of us in prior conversations.
It's a great question, because, you know, we certainly had some buildings that had a pretty high use, and then others where it was pretty minimal. And so it allows you to, that's the beauty of the data, is it allows you to have conversations on both ends of, hey, we might be running just lots of alerts in this building, so let's figure out the why, and then let's talk about, with that staff, you know, what, maybe norming what is a crisis versus what is a classroom management issue. You know, but the one thing we have continually stressed throughout this process is, we're never going to tell a staff member, don't push the button. They'll never hear that from me, they'll never hear it from Brent. So anytime a staff member feels they need assistance, they can hit it. But again, we also want to, you know, not have some of our principals have to wear running shoes every day to do nothing but run the classroom. So that's where that collaboration between the school administration and the staff in working together to kind of set some norms and some, you know, situations that would be consistent for everyone to do that the same. And then on the other end, you know, with buildings that haven't used it as much, having those conversations of, hey, here's the incident that happened last week, that would have been a good time to utilize Crisis Alert, and we did. So then there's that teaching or coachable moment as well. So, yeah, it definitely works on both ends of the spectrum, but, you know, our staff have been extremely receptive, and frankly, our feedback's just been off the charts from our staff about just them feeling empowered and secure and safe in their working environment.
And you repeatedly mentioned, we'll finish up real quick, is the data that Dr. Yeager shared, that you all are sharing with the leadership teams, and then the trickle down to the leaders of each of the schools, in sharing cross-pollinating with the PBIS programs, right? That was one of the things that Dr. Yeager had shared with us, is this isn't in a silo by itself, it's an evolving element in which we use that data. I think Dr. Veach was talking a lot with her teams about how to read the data, and this is a point of data. Where do we have the PBIS help? Where do we have the behavioral help? Where do we, who's rolled those out? And I would love, I think it'd be really unique, in about a year, to be able to cross-pollinate a presentation that says, how has this changed and how the schools changed as they fully embraced PBIS and fully embraced the alternative positive reinforcement structures, and if it has, how, right? I mean, that'd be something I'd like, kind of see that come this time of year from now, that you have a cross-conversation of, how is this working behaviorally with the other MPSS-type things and PBIS-type things? So just putting a pin in a plan, because I think my assumption is that's going to be a good thing, right? That they both help each other, right?
My comment is going to be kind of similar to that. You know, one of the things that's pretty powerful that's happened is, as Dr. McMullin and Mr. Keiger have looked at the data, and they see a school that's an outlier one way or the other, you know, they can easily go to the level assistant superintendent and say, gosh, this school seems to be an outlier in the number of buttons that are pushing. And then, you know, it really provides the opportunity for us to either go in and support and coach, or at times align district resources to help support whatever's happening in that school. It's a good piece of data for that, because, you know, many times, schools rightly are trying to, you know, take care of things themselves and working really hard to get that done. But this also has just been another triangulation of data where we can say, gosh, this school looks like they're a little different than the others for one reason or the other, and so we can either provide coaching, or we can even realign district resources in terms of some of our coaching and things like that to support schools with some of those things.
I had one last question on the Raptor. I think your number was about 27,000. Has Raptor been around long enough to be able to say that's an increase from a fall? Because I know in the last year, Dr. Yeager has really, really pushed, and it's an MBO or a management element for every principal, as Mr. Herman said, to bring the community into the schools, to bring more parents in, more volunteers in. I met two new, brand-new first-time volunteers at Santa Fe yesterday when I was over there. Is that 27,000 an increase? Is that about, is that the norm? Is that good? Is that, I don't know if that number, what that represents.
It's a great question. It's a little bit difficult, because we rolled it out to all of our buildings February of 2020. So it's a little hard. I think with a little bit more time, we'll have a more concrete answer, just because it's difficult.
Does it sound like a really good number? When we spoke the other day, you're like, you're really excited that the community engagement, the involvement showing up in the schools was, seemed to really be resonating, and the principals seemed to be enjoying it. So I thought that was, I thought that was a huge number.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, when you put that number into perspective, you know, we have about 90 school days in first semester and 27,000 visitors. So talk about getting our community back in our schools, I think that's pretty evident.
There's another data point, so I'm collecting it. So I'm sorry. That's it for me.
Thank you. Others? Go ahead, Leah.
Do we see many false alarms, like, oops, I didn't mean to push that?
You know, we've gotten a few, but not near as many as I thought we would, quite frankly. And so, no, so far, it's gone very well.
You'd have to fall into that button at least three times.
You really have to be strategic to do it, yeah, absolutely.
I just had a moment of panic, yeah. So when a sub comes in and they are issued a card, I'm understanding our use policy, like for behaviors and emergencies, is unified throughout the district. Is that right? It's not like local control at the building level?
No, that's correct, yeah. And, you know, initially, our intent was to maybe check out 10 badges to high schools, five to middle schools, five to elementaries, and have them check out to the subs each day. And in talking with our leadership team and with human resources, you know, we realized, you know, we have so many subs that are so loyal to our district, and they come every day and help us out. And so we made the choice to make that part of our onboarding training now with new subs, and then obviously trained our existing returning subs. And so they have their own badge, they keep it 24/7, and obviously, it works on any campus in the district. And yes, to answer your question, the norming of discipline, and again, as I said earlier, we'll never question someone for hitting the button. If you think there's a situation that you need assistance with, you hit it.
Right. On KMBZ and the talk radio room, they were talking about, oh, wait, the public schools and the badges, because another district here locally rolled out a similar, I don't know if it's the same brand or not, you know, badge alert system. It was interesting to hear the comments, you know, without a professional from here representing us. So sometimes you're yelling at the radio, no, that's not right, you know? So I was proud to be the lead in this, because I think it's an important initiative. So thank you very much.
I was actually going to add that just briefly, that I also heard that, and one of our teachers named Jeff, Jeff, I don't know where you are tonight, but called in on the radio show, and really did a nice job. He really did, of explaining it and just our different process and things. And it was neat to hear somebody that, I'm not sure who he is, but he did a great job of explaining it. You know, I really would like also to thank Brent and Jim and the board for the foresight to get this done. I mean, it's not oftentimes we toot our own horn for being pretty revolutionary at something, but we are the first district in the Midwest that's done this. And, you know, I will be surprised if other districts in our area, like almost all of them, don't have this within the next year, that kind of thing. And, you know, that really is, I think, reinforcing in many ways of the choice that this board made in terms of supporting that, but also the research that especially Brent did. And, you know, the warp speed implementation is absolutely true. Brad Caldwell's not in the room, he's out in the lobby probably, but, you know, just a very small team did a pretty incredible lift to get this done for our system, and it's gone extremely well. So kudos to lots of people for this.
That's another.
Quick comment, and we talked a lot about tonight, about the unintended benefits that we've gotten from this, and that's wonderful. How often in education do we get a talk on January 12th about last semester data? So that's pretty exciting, too. Very, very real-time information.
Absolutely, thank you.
Nice point. Others?
Wait, make one more comment. So, you know, when we have a limited pot of money, and then you as security specialists look at it, and we've got parents wanting to have metal detectors, for example, you know, making the cultural decision, you know, first of all, we don't even have to talk about the efficacy of those, but, you know, a badge around every teacher, to me, is such a wise investment compared to, you know, locking down and having everybody have to go through, like TSA screening. And so I want to thank you for that as well, because you've allowed us to maintain our neighborhood school culture while making us safer. And so I would be remiss if I didn't point that out, because, you know, we've had those conversations over as long as I've been here. And, you know, as a mom, you know, when you start hearing about bulletproof vests, you know, or backpacks that, you know, some families have invested in, because, you know, it is scary in this culture to, you never know, you know, what's going to happen. This, to me, is just a brilliant investment, and we still have the warm, welcoming school with the Raptor. So we've got layers of safety, and then we've got the video and this, you know, locked in when you get in until you're, make sure that you're supposed to be there. So we're doing the right things, I feel like. I feel very comfortable saying to any parent that, you know, safety is a priority, and we prove it with stuff like this. So thank you both very much.
Well, and, and a quick return thank you to the board. This board has always invested in safety in this district. As Brent and I have been to a conference earlier this year and hearing districts that are just now getting access, access control management, you know, on their exterior doors, you know, something our board did in 2016 and that bond, you know? And so we, I feel like our board and this district has always been on the forefront and I'm very thankful for that.
Thank you. Others? All right. Appreciate you guys. Moving on, public comments. Mr. Boyd?
The Board of Education reserves limited time during its regular meeting for individuals to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room when requested by the board president. When beginning your address to the board, we ask that you please share your name, the city where you live, what schools your children attend or have attended in the district if applicable. Tonight, we request that individuals, speakers limit their comments to three minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when their three minutes have expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. We ask that speakers refrain from discussing complaints involving individual staff members or students if they have not been previously addressed to the district administration. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, yelling, foul language, props, visuals, and addressing the audience is not permitted. In addition, audience members are not allowed to speak, yell, give applause during public comments. This ensures the board is able to listen and then transition to the next speaker. Please note that those who disrupt the meeting in any capacity will be actually leave and may lose the opportunity to attend in future meetings.
All right. First up, we have Megan Bricks.
Good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Megan Bricks and I'm in my fifth year of teaching here in the Olathe Public Schools. First, I want to begin by thanking each of our board members for their time and dedication to their position. I know that the work you do is nowhere near easy, so I thank you for making this a part of your life. I'm a teacher who prides herself on being a teacher here in Olathe. I stand up here every month speaking to use my voice. I'm a teacher who is proud to tell others that I'm an elementary music teacher who also gets to coach at the high school level. I'm a teacher who prides herself that I work alongside the best colleagues a music teacher could ever ask for. My specialist team has and will always have my back. Today is an amazing example of the truly amazing colleague support that I have. This morning, as I left with our bowling team, I came to discover that the substitute who had taken my job for today had been pulled. And I was left with an unfilled substitute position, which is very disheartening. As a teacher, one of the worst feelings that you can truly ever feel is knowing that your sub position has gone unfilled and that someone in your school, your team members or other counselors or even your principal would have to become a music teacher for an hour at a time during their own personal time. This is something that we do. It's a part of our daily life. We step up and we fill in for our colleagues, but the sad thing is that we should not have to do that as our job. We should not have teachers feeling bad that they took the day off, whether it's because they are truly sick, have an appointment, or that they simply need a mental health day. The teaching profession is suffering and these types of things are weighing heavily on our shoulders. Another example of a current situation with educators is that many teachers are unable to attend professional development conferences or symposiums due to our lack of subs. As it has been communicated to me, we are in such dire need that there are no substitutes provided on Fridays for out of district professional development. Take a moment and look at the words on the wall sitting behind you. Your vision is for students prepared for their future. Well, I'm here to tell you that in order to prepare those students for their future, we must continue our learning. When a teacher asks to attend a professional conference, they're doing that because they want to better themselves, better their students, better their community. Teacher retention is a top hot topic across the country, but especially in the state of Kansas, and this ties directly to that topic. We need your help. We need your help. I truly hope that I will get to keep my substitute for tomorrow so that my teammates don't have to teach my music classes again tomorrow. We have to do better for the students of this school district, for our Olathe community and for your own personal Olathe employees. We need your help. It's hard. Somehow it has to get better. Thank you.
Thank you. Bree Lakey, who I don't see. So we will move on. Patty Lanter?
Sorry. Hi, I'm Patty. Before I start, I also want to say thank you for being on the board. And just want you to know that I would rather have teeth full than be here speaking. I hope and pray that you all make each decision thoughtfully and carefully and that you do not ever give up your decision power to agencies, need the autonomous, autonomous agencies regarding our local schools. I want to talk a little bit about history. I found that in 1963, there were goals published in the professional record, 45 goals to get us towards communism. At least 16 of these that I read have already been implemented that impact the extreme left bias in our schools directly. I can't speak on all of them now, but please look them up. You can find them in many places, including Marxist.org. Some of them reference removal of morality, allowing addition of pornography, encouragement of activism, discrediting of founding fathers, emphasize the need to get children away from the negative influence of parents, belittling American culture and American history, and also create the impression that violence is a legitimate aspect of American tradition. Those are, they're very important. There's a lot of them and we are well on the way for many of those. Regarding history and curriculum, the public, private, part, sorry, partnership bias and agenda. There are many half truths, only one side in the, in the bias in the way of whoever is giving the money wants the situation portrayed. For example, there's a book that my son read recently in seventh grade and his impression, his takeaway from that and others that I've talked to was that most Germans didn't know that the Holocaust was actually happening right in front of their eyes. I don't really like that. That is not accurate. I don't like it at all, actually. Also CNN 10 often is a very biased source that is used in most of middle schools, classrooms and even fourth and fifth grade sometimes. They've shown China democratically voting for their communist leader. As the previous leader is pulled out of the meeting, his papers left on the table and they are forcefully removed from his hands. They also neglect to mention that individuals are tracked everywhere they go while portraying zero COVID as a good thing with a green and red basically marker as people go into a place. They can't buy things at a store if they are red, for example. That can be a whole topic on its own. It is used as a babysitter in some classes with no critique. Let's see. Bias is much bigger than our district since the framework is coming from the top infused bias from Castle, trying to move thoughts, the entire generation away from those of their parents toward the collectivist thinking of Karl Marx where individualism is not praised. Sorry.
Thank you. Clint Anderson?
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Clint Anderson. I live at 11341 Renee Street in the Olathe East District. I attended last month's board meeting along with my high school son and a few others as a component of a program, of a citizenship badge that the boys were working on in a program called Trail Life USA. We were in attendance simply to learn and observe how a school board meeting operates. We were not there because of any particular issues. However, there was an important topic that came up during the public comments and I'm going to speak to that topic here this evening. At last month's meeting, two students and a teacher spoke out against the district's policy regarding gender identity, namely that parents must be notified and involved with students' decisions to identify apart from their natural gender. As a parent of two high school students myself, I want to weigh in to strongly support this policy regarding parental consent for such matters. This is a no brainer. In recent years, it's become increasingly common to view gender as fluid, arbitrary and up for grabs. Such ideas are destructive to our society and to the mental health of our teenagers. Many teenagers naturally struggle with their place in the world and particularly for young women, with the changes in their bodies that become more readily apparent. Suggesting that the reason for their struggles is that they might be trapped in the body of the wrong gender is a lie. It's harmful and it's evil. Pursuing gender confusion may result in permanent irreversible life altering decisions. The only thing more tragic would be to encourage this without the parent's knowledge and engagement. If my child struggled with his sexual identity, my wife and I must be notified and engaged so that we could provide as much love and care as possible, helping him understand his true identity. I can assure you that if my child was being solicited by a teacher from the Gender and Sexuality Alliance without notifying me, there would be consequences in the legal and public relations arenas. Children in this district are not assets in a social engineering experiment. And yes, teenagers are still children. Our society has always recognized that teenagers are not fully formed adults and still need guidance from wise and mature adults, starting with parents and extending to hopefully include teachers and other school personnel as the parents so choose. Parents should never be subverted or avoided around the monumental topics of gender identity and sexuality. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. Moving on, action consent. If there are no questions or items that need to be pulled, I would look for a motion.
Move to approve 6.01 through 6.09 as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Beveridge, a second by Mr. Kuhn. Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to section seven, action bids, contracts and agreements. Would ask if there are any questions or items of discussion. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve action bids, contracts, agreements, 7.01 through 7.10 as presented. Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mrs. Felter, a second by Mrs. Steele. Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to future action items. I will sound like a broken record, but if you have questions, make sure that you get those to Dr. Jaeger. We point out 9.07 as we look at student staff device refresh. And Mr. Hutchison made some comments about that and how Mr. Umfree has put together a, a good plan to get us off of sooner rather than later financing those through, through bond issuance, right? And to get those back into capital outlay with it, which I really appreciate. So again, if you've got questions on any of these pieces, make sure you get those to Dr. Jaeger so he can put those to the, to the right folks. Information written again. Head Start Director's Report and the bond issue update. Hope everyone had an opportunity to take a look at that. We'll move on to topics for discussion. Believe it or not, I'm actually going to start. I had an opportunity last night to, to spend some time at Olathe West and make some quick remarks for the induction of RoKappa, which is the National Honor Society for Social Studies. It was a natural because I'm a political science major. And so it was really nice to see a, a group of young people who wanted to, to commit to a deeper understanding of the social sciences that often get knocked, right? And part of what I talked about was, you know, when we think about social studies, we think often our minds go straight to history. Right? But what I told them was, I'm sure that they've got fantastic plans for the future, but I would guess that 90% of them will be in a people business. And part of social studies is learning about how people organize, how people think, how people respond to different stimuli. And so those are skills while I'm not doing the thing that I thought I was going to do when I got my political science degree. Those are skills that have served me well. So congratulations to those inductees. I know you guys are shocked because there's more words than usually come out of my mouth. Others?
I just want to call and draw folks' attention to our website, olathe schools.org. You can follow all of the, the Bond 22 project updates that Travis and his team are managing and get updates there. It's, it's there for our, our community to see and take advantage of. So we really like to encourage everyone to go out there and stay up to date on what's going on with Bond 22.
I just have a couple of things. First, I want to congratulate my friend and fellow board member Brad Boyd on completing his first week in Topeka this week. We're really proud of you. So thank you for serving on yet another level here in our state. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
And then another thing, there's no greater compliment than when one of our students strives to make Olathe their home. And I just learned of a kid who graduated from Olathe Northwest. Some of you may know him. His name is Warren Sears. And he is now a meteorologist with KC TV 5. And he's been gone for a few years, but really wanted to get back here to this area. And I think what a testament. If you don't have a positive school academic experience in Olathe Schools, you're probably not going to have that drive. But when we get one of our own back in a, in any role, but in a role like that where we get to watch him do his thing, it's just really exciting. So what a compliment to all of our educators for what you're doing. And, you know, it's a different way of looking at growing your own. When we get our own back here in our community, what a great thing. So anyway, you can follow him on Twitter at WarrenKCTV5. And I think he graduated a couple of years ahead of my son, so maybe 2015 or 2014, but a young kid and he'll be really fun to watch. So.
Does that apply to Dr. McMullin, the same kind of thing you were just saying?
We are glad to have Dr. McMullin.
That's awesome.
It just seemed to fit for Mark.
It's your night, Jim.
It is. Yeah. Can I have your autograph afterwards? Thanks for pointing that out because it's so exciting to see the kids come back and we want them back. I mean, that's the only way this works, right? Is keep growing. And on the HR report, I was so excited to celebrate. We grew one of our own and she came back and she's teaching for us next year. So Sarah Kelly, shout out to her. She's going to be amazing. And then I wanted to encourage everybody to watch for the Taste of the Town. Who's been there? Yeah. It's amazing. Everybody holds up their glasses. They say that because it's quite an event. It's on April 1st. And the great thing about this is every single dime raised goes towards mental health interventions for our students. And so last year they netted 200,000. Great news. Our goal this year is 250,000. The thing is Angie, Angie Salva reported that the district paid out of the 200,000, 138,000 this fall. So, so we need to really support this effort because we're meeting a need, but not quite all the way. So again, I'm going to say a hundred percent of the funds raised go straight towards mental health intervention. So watch online. Tickets go on sale January 18th. You can just watch social media also because we'll be blitzing it everywhere. And unfortunately, some of us will be at the national conference. So we may figure out how to do a Taste of the Town Zoom. We figured out how to Zoom, right? Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. We're good?
I wanted to add a couple of good things. So it is basketball season and there are baseball, basketball games many nights a week. I wanted to throw out a great compliment to the high schools because they've been to high school games. I'm tremendous pride in watching a gym overfilled with kids and parents and community. And they're respectful and get along. And it's kind of funny, some of the things that they do and they yell, you know, airball and stuff like that. But in the most competitive situations, the staff are in front of their students. That's nice too. But the kids are paying attention. They're following the rules. They're listening. They're engaged and they're passionate. And so are the parents. And I have not been to, and I've been to six nights of games, not heard any. And I have not been to, and I've been to six nights of games, not heard any bad words from the crowd, not from the parents, not from the kids, not from anybody. That reflects well on our district. That reflects well on our schools, and our kids, and our staff, and the parents that are saying, hey, I don't want to see you on TV doing something you should be doing, right? Because a lot of these have been broadcast, not only by the broadcast teams from each of the high schools, but on Spectrum Sports and things like that. So I want to make sure that when things are good, like Julie just mentioned, when things are happening good, that we say so and we call that out, because it's easy to pick on kids when they make the rarer mistake instead of, and what in PBIS is called positive behavioral feedback, right? And to the point with all those people, 27,000 Raptor check-ins, tonight I got an opportunity to volunteer for the next five weeks. I was voluntold by a parent at the particular school, so I wanted to say a shout out to Ms. Hercules and the folks at Sunnyside. They had a program called Splash for years until COVID that brought kids into the schools, parents and people from all over, and they're reigniting that program, right? So as much as I am at the high school side with my kids, I got roped into making up a program and having kids. I think the number was over 222 kids stayed after school to go do something from aeronautics to dance, to cheerleading, to science, to cup racing, and mine, I was just making up something called Spike. But to all the parents that showed up to be secondary volunteers, to all the staff that stayed extra, truly exhausting for an hour, but it was really amazing to watch. And I just want to throw out a big compliment, because I know that's something that Hercules and every school is doing something with their PTOs and folks, and that's a huge part of the community, right? Re-engaging the community, re-engaging with those kids. Those kids were thrilled. I mean, you could see them all buzzing and so excited in the gym at the end as we were trying to figure out where their parents were and which ones were walking. But I wanted to make sure that I always call that out. I talk to Dr. Jaeger often, tell him about, hey, did you hear about this? Did you do this? Did you do that? And so I just want to make sure I say the good things that happen, because it's hard to do that, but it's also important that we do that. So the last thing I want to do is, I did not get something prepared in time to get on this agenda, and I had to mention it to Julie and Dr. Jaeger. Next month, February is National Heart Awareness Month, American Heart Association. I am rewriting, working on rewriting, and I will get to hopefully be able to present to you all to put on the agenda a zero-cost, next-to-zero-effort model for sudden cardiac awareness. You know, it's all the news, and 100 sudden cardiac arrests happen every single day. Oh, excuse me, 1,000 a day. So I'm hoping that this district will be able to take a step forward in just awareness. No punishments for anyone, just awareness, more CPR. I saw a post on, is it OKSS's website, Facebook page, of Mr. Zimmerman going over to Oregon Trail and showing some of the kids how to do hands-only CPR. You know, that's really terrific. That speaks to my heart. So my hope is that in February, that all of us will pay attention and be more aware of what it takes to save a life. This is a cutting edge. I did an interview, talked to, by the way, HBO Insider Sports, and they're talking about sports and sudden cardiac arrests, and some of y'all know that my son had this cardiac arrest a few years ago, and was able to brag on Aletha Schools for having AEDs in every school without a law requiring it, right? It is not required by law, and multiples in every middle school and every high school. And there was surprise from the producers. Really? That's not, you're not doing that because you're required? That proactive guidance from some of the established board members over the years to do that is, I'm real grateful, right? But it's also something to brag on, that just like the security in front of buildings, that some of y'all have been really out front on a lot of these things from security and safety, and, you know, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's it.
Any others before I turn it over to Dr. Jaeger? Floor is yours, sir.
All right, thank you very much. So as you know, right before winter break, we completed as a school district our start and end time survey that certainly was about mostly some of the transportation challenges we're having with regard to busing and that kind of thing. I'm really pleased tonight to share just some initial kind of results to that, but we had almost 6,300 people take our survey, which if you think about the week before winter break and everything that families have going on to prepare for winter break, having that many people that spent time responding to a survey is really, really appreciated. And actually, each person that took it, the average time spent taking the survey was almost 14 minutes. So lots of thoughtful information from our community and our stakeholders on that, which we just greatly, greatly, greatly appreciate. I would also like to just quickly shout out our communications team, who also did a great job with the communications around the survey and the things that we're working on. Lots of hard work behind the scenes to get this all done. But in terms of some highlights, you know, one of the most important questions that we asked on that survey was, how supportive would you be of adjusting start and end times at all levels? And if you combine the very supportive, the somewhat supportive, and our folks who are neutral that took the survey, we're at like 89.7%. So almost 90% of the people that took the survey said we would be interested in having this conversation and the district moving forward with this, and we so appreciated that and really gives us some great guidance. We had, on kind of the open feedback question, we had 5,510 comments written. Becky and her team are doing an amazing job of disaggregating 5,510 comments, but a lot of the comments are really helpful. But the one that really stuck out initially is how grateful people were that we said, what do you think, before we move forward with that and that kind of thing. So that was really beneficial for us as a school system. The other thing that's really great, too, is we asked how many people would be interested in potentially serving on a committee to look at start and end times, and we had 517 people say yes, and 1,077 people say maybe. So it may be the largest committee in the history of school districts of almost 1,600 people. Just kidding. But the great thing is, is certainly we will have a committee, and I'm gonna talk about next steps in a minute. But we have over 1,500 people who now we know are ready, willing, and able to work with us on committees, because we asked the question about would you be willing to serve on a future committee? And so we're really excited as we look at new curriculum resources, as we have decisions to make as a school district, that we have a group of parents that we know who are interested in serving alongside us and helping inform decisions. So that was a great part of it as well. Number 10 on the survey says, would you be interested in serving as a bus driver? We had 26 people say yes, and we had 108 people say maybe. So I will say to those people, a little over 130 of you out there, if you could sign up, that'd be awesome. We would so appreciate that. But those folks all gave us their contact information. We passed that along to DS, and they're working to try to secure some of those people right now. So lots of great news as we looked at the survey and information that we got from our community. You know, in terms of next step, you know, we're driven somewhat by where we'll need to be in terms of being ready to have families sign up for transportation next year and planning, obviously, and those kinds of things. So Dr. McMullin found out, it is your night, Jim. Dr. McMullin found out Monday morning that he would be leading this committee work for us as a school system. So he's working with Olivia and our Transportation Department. Very quickly, he'll be providing kind of a timeline of where we need to be and benchmarks and those sorts of things. But right now, we're looking at a small district steering team that's kind of been working behind the scenes on this. Very quickly, we will add some school administration, also school staff, probably a few administrators, probably 10 to 15 teachers from across our system, and 15 to 20 parents that indicated that they'd be interested. And obviously, we'll be looking for a representative cross-section of our school district and those kinds of things. And then all of that would end, if you will, likely with a presentation to the board that kind of walks through the process, what that committee considered, and land on an ultimate recommendation. We're probably gonna be looking at the March-April timeframe to do that at the very latest.
No pressure.
No pressure. But we really feel that, you know, it's obviously for us to get the input of our staff, but also to, as we move forward, make sure that families have time to plan and prepare and those kinds of things should we make those changes. So anyway, that's coming. We're, again, really appreciative of everybody that took time to provide us feedback with that. I would like to just mention quickly as well, this Sunday is our annual Martin Luther King Celebration Competition Celebration that's a partnership with our district, the city of Aletha, and Garmin is the presenting sponsor on that and has been for several years. That happens at Aletha Northwest, I think at 11:30 on Sunday morning. We're really excited each year to have that, and, you know, it's an opportunity to be just blown away by the talent of our students in Aletha. Our secondary students participate, and pretty incredible. And you certainly will hear more about that if you're not able to attend. We always recognize the winner here at a board meeting and, you know, share their work, whatever it is, whether it's a video or a piece of art or those kinds of things. So we're really excited about that this Sunday, a longstanding tradition in our district that's really been great. I'd also like to thank all of our staff that participated in our professional development on January 4th. You know, our Learning Services Division and this work is kind of led by Jenna Cooter. If you think about the fact that we have almost 3,000 certified staff members, certified licensed staff members, that every district professional day we organize and we provide professional learning, it's pretty incredible when you think that there's literally hardly a national conference anywhere that does that in terms of having that many people that attend and learn and have something valuable for them. And we do it four or five times a year right here in Aletha, and that is so much because of the quality of educators we have in our district who are willing to step up and say, I'd like to share my expertise with my colleagues and those sorts of things. So, you know, it's one of those things that we try really hard to make it meaningful for our staff, but it's gobs of work by literally hundreds of people to pull that off several times a year. And I so appreciate the people that presented and organized, all those kinds of things, but also all of our staff members that participated as well. Just a little bit of a comparison for you. Last year, the first two days back after winter break, we had over 200 unfilled sub jobs. So if you would have looked at the same two days last year after winter break, we would have had 200, over 200 unfilled sub jobs. Last week, we had 10. So in terms of, you know, where we are potentially with the health of our staff, but also really the work that our Sub Services Department has done in our district, it's pretty incredible. And there's lots of reasons for that, but man, it's hard when that job doesn't fill. But I want to be really clear that our team is just working their tails off to, you know, fill those sub jobs and do everything they can for that. You know, there's virtually a week, never a week that goes by, actually, they get tired of it, but there's orientation meetings in this room a lot of times, and I stick my head in and interrupt and thank people for coming to Aletha and that kind of thing. But, you know, it's very common that we have 45 or 50 people in here signing up to be subs and things like that. The challenge is real. It's absolutely real, and all school districts are struggling with that. But in terms of comparison, boy, I'd rather have 10 unfilled jobs last week than over 200. So that's at least trending in the right direction for sure. Last thing, I sort of thank our staff for a great start to the 2023 year. I've been in several schools this week, had an opportunity to be in a couple last week, and, you know, kind of similar to what I said at the beginning of the year, the energy and enthusiasm around a new year and those kinds of things has really, really been remarkable. And our kids must have slept a lot over the break. I was in a high school today and a couple of elementary schools today. Everybody looks well-rested and ready to roll, so I'm pretty excited about that as well. Those are my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we need two executive sessions this evening. The first one, how long are you recommending?
Let's go for 25 minutes.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
I move that the board go into the executive section for the purpose of concentration with attorney for the body or agency pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma. Let the board return to the regular meeting at 7:55 PM in this room.
Second. Motion by Mr. Boyd, a second by Mr. Kuhn.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
To your second executive session, right?
Yep.
There you go.
I move that the board goes to their next session for the purpose of discussing material or matters relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting persons as a student, patient, or resident of a public institution, except that any such person shall have the right to a public hearing if requested by the person, and that the board returns to the regular meeting at...
12:00?
20 after.
8:20 PM in this room.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
You too.
You guys are good.
That's the first time.
To your second executive session, right?
Yep.
There you go.
I move that the board goes to their next session for the purpose of discussing material or matters relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting persons as a student, patient, or resident of a public institution, except that any such person shall have the right to a public hearing if requested by the person, and that the board returns to the regular meeting at...
12:00?
20 after.
8:20 PM in this room.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
You too.
You guys are good.
That's the first time. concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of Student E231. Second. Okay. Okay. So, I'll do the first. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee